Of the proposed subdivision. And the project overall requires a number of future approvals that were discussed at the last meeting, but at this time, the role of the commission is simply related to the lot split. Staff's review indicates that the plat will meet the subdivision and zoning standards specified in code with two exceptions related to lot size and parking. So to address these exceptions, staff would recommend approval of the subdivision with two conditions. First, a lot size variance for lot two shall be obtained. And second, a variance shall be obtained for 40 off-street parking spaces related to the East Washington crossings building. Again, those parking spaces will be provided, they just will not be on the same parcel technically because of this plat.
Thank you, Carlos. This time we'll move to public hearing. For this Main Square Annex subdivision at 166 Main Street, when anyone from the public wish to speak to the commission today, please state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. I'll make a second call for a public hearing today for Main Square Annex subdivision. State your name and address. I'll make a third and final call for the public hearing today on the Main Square Annex subdivision at 166 West 6th Street. Anyone like to speak? State your name and address. All right, hearing, no one? And seeing no one, we'll close the, close public hearing. Turn it over, turn this item over to the commissioners.
Commissioner Olson there. I make a motion to approve the, this petition, this sub, Main Square Annex subdivision with the inclusion of the two variances that are listed on our agenda.
All right, you got a motion to approve?
Commissioner Ballard seconds the motion.
And we have motion and a second. Commissioners? Any discussion, commissioners? Everyone's being quiet. We'll call a vote. We'll call, start with Olson.
I approve, yes.
Olson, you, I. Hall.
Aye.
Ballard.
Aye.
Sounds like an aye. Hahn.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Shortridge.
Aye.
Motion to approve, the subdivision passes. The Main Square Annex subdivision passes, okay. Our next, on our next agenda item, on a public hearing, comprehensive plan amendment request for low-density to urban residential at 22839 County Road 17.
And Chair, this is Carlos Espinoza speaking. Is it, do you have the ability to advance the screen that's being shared with everyone here to the page on the agenda, the first page on the agenda that has the map for this item?
We're, we're working on it. Oh, there we go. Luke has it.
There we go, right there. Thank you much.
You're welcome. Anyone from the petitioner I'd like to speak today to the commission?
Yes, thank you. This is Melissa Nelson with Bradford Development out of Mankato, Minnesota.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So we are proposing to develop Cedar Brook Cooperative, which is a 62-plus senior housing cooperative, very similar to what we previously developed at 1420 East Burns Valley Road, Willowbrook Cooperative. They had actually put a call into us, it was June of 2018, when we first started the process with this, asking if we would consider developing another senior housing cooperative in Winona. That one has sold out and has about 48 people on a waiting list to purchase shares there. And so we're proposing this 36-unit cooperative. Our housing studies showed a need for 82 cooperative units. It's ownership that is maintenance-free, which is a big selling point for folks. It falls into the affordable housing category because we work with HUD Section 213 program for the mortgage insurance, and they insure the master mortgage on the building and lock nice low-interest rate for 40 years and really makes these buildings really quite successful. As far as the parcel that we have been working on here, we've gotten really good feedback from those folks who have money down. I've got 42 people on a reservation list, basically in line for when everything is final to be able to choose a home within the cooperative to purchase. But really good feedback as far as the rural setting, you know, not being positioned right downtown, there's direct access to city water and sewer running out along County Road 17. Then, of course, the golf course is a wonderful feature to have nearby. But the success rate of cooperatives is very, very high, as you've seen in the city of Winona. And it would be a four-story building, underground heated parking with the numbers of common areas throughout, six different floor plans. People purchase, they buy in from about $108,000 up to $154,000, I believe, yeah. And it would sit back, further back along that bluff line, which I think Carlos will probably talk a little bit more about. The other thing, I wanted to make sure if there's any neighbors nearby joining us today that, I want to make sure that we just have all the proper information communicated and that, you know, if there's anything that we can do on our end to address any concerns or questions, you know, anything from landscaping to buffering, we are all open and open for that discussion and will do, you know, anything that we can to help appease any concerns or, most importantly, just get the most correct information out there so that everybody's on the same page and we can work together moving forward.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. Carlos?
Yes, after afternoon again, commissioners. So for this agenda item here, it is the first step in a multi-step approval process related to the project that Melissa discussed, the proposed co-op building at this location, which is 22839 County Road 17. You have the map in front of you on the screen there, and you can see it is directly adjacent to the main entrance to the Bridges Golf Course. As part of this petition, what we're looking at today is a request to change the land use designation for three acres. That three acres is in blue, that is on the west side of County Road 17, that Luke is outlining right now. That three acres, in addition to that, there is an additional six acres of land that is part of a overall annexation request that has been submitted to the city for the total approximate nine-acre property. That overall annexation request is scheduled to go to the city council on May 4th. That is an annexation by ordinance request, which is permitted under a state statute and has a specific structure. That structure entails a city council public hearing, followed by review at the state level prior to annexation. So that's its own specific process, but related to that process is this request for a portion of the land, that three acres for the proposed 36-unit co-op. Overall, this concept was submitted at the end of last year in October, and on November 4th of 2019, we had a pre-council meeting prior to the regularly scheduled council meeting that night to review not only the annexation request, but also talk a little bit about this proposed use. At that meeting, there was general council support to proceed with the annexation request in an effort to help facilitate this project that is being proposed by Bradford Development. As I've noted, there are a number of other approvals that are needed for this to move forward. Those include zoning, which would be the application of the R3 zoning district, a variance to building height requirements potentially, preliminary plat, final plat, and a site plan as well. So this is really just the first step in taking a look at this proposed use. And again, what we're taking a look at tonight is just that comprehensive plan designation of low-density for the blue area and the request to change it to urban residential to facilitate the proposed development. Overall, in taking a look at the request, staff would recommend two conditions for any approval action by the council. The first condition being that all land use zoning and site plan approvals to construct the proposed 36-unit co-op with underground parking shall be obtained by May 2021. And number two, if that condition is not met, the comp plan change shall be null and void. These conditions are simply recommended to ensure that if for some reason the project does not move forward, that the land in blue would revert back to low-density next year. So moving forward here, again, the request is to move from low-density to the requested designation, which is urban residential. The urban residential, yeah, signifies high-density. You know, we don't have a different designation for a mid-to-high-density project outside of kind of what you would think of as the urban core area of Winona. So that's where you're getting this urban residential name for the category, but nonetheless, it is the only land use designations that would facilitate that rezoning that's also needed for this project, which would be zoning the property that is currently in the township to an R3 zoning designation. For the request tonight, the planning commission has three criteria that you are directed to assess. The first has to do with consistency with the policies and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and I'm just moving through my staff report, I'm on page four here. And related to this criteria, staff notes that the land use section designates two areas for land use in the city. The first is the future land use plan, and that essentially is something that relates to land within the current city boundaries. And what we have for that in the comprehensive plan is a specific map that depicts proposed land uses within city boundaries. However, this request is coming from a different map. It's in the urban expansion area, which is meant to be more of a conceptual plan for long-range growth outside of city boundaries. So just taking a look at this, it appears a comprehensive plan intends for more flexibility in the urban expansion area where the subject property is located. Also taking a look at the housing section, the housing section establishes a goal of a balanced housing supply through meeting demographic and socioeconomic sectors of the population needs for housing related to those, and also has an objective to assess future needs of housing in Winona, including the large baby boom population segment. This project essentially fulfills that objective. The second criteria has to do with changes to the comprehensive plan since 2007. The first paragraph in your agenda on this item notes that since the completion of the comprehensive plan in 2007, sewer and water utilities were extended past the subject property in 2008. This extension was related to the cobblestone subdivision. So in addition to providing city sewer and water to facilitate development of that subdivision, it was also anticipated that the mains could provide service for existing properties and help facilitate new developments, such as what is proposed by Bradford. In addition, since 2007, the city completed its most recent housing study in 2016. In that study, we projected a unmet demand for the specific type of housing, not only in 2016, but also continuing through to 2031. The developer also submitted a analysis of demand for this housing type, which is provided in your packets as attachment C, and that also shows demand for these types of rental units, not just now presently, but also moving into the future too. It's important to note that the housing studies took into account the fact that these are co-op units, and the co-op designation is significant, is different than the rental units, which have been recently developed in the Main Square project or Bluffview Estates on Mankato Avenue. So over and above those existing projects that have come forward since 2016 and since 2007, the studies do show demand for this specific type of project, product that is being proposed by Bradford Development. I'll also note too that the mayor's housing task force recommendations from 2017 state that when annexation is occurring where appropriate, we should allow for land use changes to facilitate multifamily developments, which are, which is similar to what is being proposed tonight. Third, the amendment will not have an undue impact on the health, safety, or welfare of the community. That's the final criteria that the planning commission is directed to look at. Overall, the urban residential land use designation is surrounded by low-density or undeveloped properties. As a result, the proposed multi-unit residential building isn't in character with the surrounding area. It's a significant density change between the nearest properties and what is being proposed. However, just taking a look at the map, the use will be buffered in the short term by an undeveloped area between the subject property and existing houses on County Road 17. And I think we're going to pull up that map here on the screen that everybody can see. So in the blue area, the blue area is the subject for the comprehensive planned land use designation change. The area in orange that says buffer/future development area is an area that will be, remain low-density moving into the future. The designation would support future rezoning to maximum R1.5 zoning district, which could allow the development of residential homes to be built between the existing structures and on County Road 17 and the proposed co-op. So essentially what you have in the short term is a 250-foot-wide strip of land, that's approximately a city block between the proposed development and existing houses. And in the future, not only will you potentially have that area there, that distance between the high-density proposal and the lower-density houses along 17, but you also may have more, the potential for mid-density development in that area, things such as single-family homes, twin homes, et cetera. On the other side of the subject property, on the other side of the blue is bluffland area, and you'll see I noted in the map there that that's generally non-developable due to slopes. Overall, I did note in the agenda that staff sees the setting for the proposed co-op development as somewhat similar to the 49-unit Winona Arms apartment building that currently exists in the Knott Valley subdivision, although this building is high-density as part of surrounding neighborhood, which includes single-family homes, townhomes, and church. That map is in front of you right now. This is the Winona Arms building in the center of the screen, and is designated R3 zoning, which would be the same zoning district that we would apply to the Bradford Development project. That specific project is adjacent to single-family homes, which are also zoned R3, and approximately 200 feet away. Single-family homes to the north that have R2 zoning and are only 115 feet away. Townhomes to the east, just that over 100 feet away, and then the church use to the south. So what we have is a similar type of use density-wise in an existing subdivision that does not appear to create any issues with the neighborhood. And so staff would see this proposal, although it does differ significantly from the low-density designation that it currently has right now, as something that there is precedence for, precedence for in the city of Winona. So overall, in consideration of the matter, you have actions in front of you tonight. They are to recommend approval of the request. As I noted previously, I would recommend that any approval action contain the two conditions that are listed. Could also recommend denial of the request. If denial is recommended, a specific reason should be given, and a motion should be made to direct staff to bring a resolution of denial for review at the next meeting. You could also recommend tabling the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. At this time, we'll have a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak from the public on this comprehensive plan amendment request to go from a low-density area to urban residential at 22839 County Road 17? Please state your name and address.
This is Jim Verkota, 1406 Island Drive. I served as the housing task force chair. This, with a lot of the needs that we identified in that, I would think that we would want to positively move forward on this request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Please state your name and address. We were talking about the comprehensive plan amendment for low-density to urban residential at 22839 County Road 17.
Hi, this is Mike Latrell. I live at 23273 Blackberry Road, so we're just to the south of Blackberry. Anyway, my wife and I just wanted to say that we were against this. And also, can you update us? What's to keep this from expanding into the, of bluffland? I feel like down the road that this could happen, and are we going to have a water tower here like they do at Phillips and?
And what is the plan for the surrounding bluffland that's already been so compromised when it was sort of clear-cut and all that brush and lumber was just left in hundreds and hundreds, innumerable really, piles along the bluff side? It's not only unsightly, in my opinion, it's a fire risk. Is there any plans to require that to be cleaned up before moving forward with more development?
I'm not sure if I can speak to that.
Well, I think it's important, and I think it's difficult to speak to it. This could be approved.
Have you guys walked out there? Because it wasn't clear-cut, it was just bulldozed into piles, and it's changed the dynamic of the wildlife back here, and it's very unsightly and...
Causing erosion.
Yeah, it's, it's like somebody set a bomb off.
It's, I wouldn't want to live in an area over there, I can tell you that.
Carlos, could you speak to that?
Please state your names, Tim.
State your names when you begin to speak. Carlos, could you speak to their questions about what might happen there?
Sure. So in terms of the brush and woodland area, that is outside of the request that's in front of the planning commission tonight. It's also outside of the area that's proposed to be annexed into the city. At this point, that area is under the jurisdiction of Wilson Township. So future plans for that land would ultimately be decided by the township. Nonetheless, the city would like to work cooperatively with the township to help manage the state of the land appropriately.
And Carlos, this land, assuming we approve the plan can change and it becomes annexed to the city of Winona, would need to comply with the city's bluffland protection ordinances?
The land that is annexed within the city of Winona would need to comply with the city's bluffland protection ordinances, yes. So that would be under review by the commission at subsequent steps in the overall development process for this application. That would most likely come through in the preliminary plat phase. However, the current designation, the current layout for the building essentially brings it away from the bluffland areas, so I think that any potential impacts to the overlay district will be relatively minimal. So the second thing is, in terms of development outside of the area, if there were, for there to be any type of development outside of the area related to city requirements, which is where potential for a water tower or something like that would come in, we'd have to go through this process all over again for additional land outside of the boundaries. And, you know, furthermore, if the land to the west were annexed into the city of Winona, it would become under our subdivision, or I'm sorry, under our bluffland regulations, which essentially would prohibit any type of development in that area.
Okay. Thank you, Carlos.
Yep.
And answered your questions.
Yes, I, this is Laurel Latrell, and, you know, I'm glad to hear that. One thing, I mean, I appreciate Mr. Espinoza's willingness to work with Wilson Township to get that area cleaned up, but, you know, that's really the property owner's responsibility, in my opinion, not Wilson Township's. And I get, you know, I would just think that the city before annexing land, that they're going to put a high-density housing development on, that they would want those, you know, this is a fire hazard, and I would think that they would want it for public safety reasons cleaned up and the erosion issues addressed before really rewarding the property owner and moving ahead with developments, so.
Again, I believe those, that's on an adjacent piece of property, and it would currently still be with the, for review to look at that. Well, I understand your concern, and I've seen those piles out there myself, go by there today, but looks like, yeah, a lot of that might be on a different bit of land.
It is, but all owned by the same person, correct? That same person cleared it all out to allow for the development and, and also cleared the hillside, so that's my concern.
Have you guys walked that property? I mean, it's, from a distance, it doesn't look quite as bad, but when you walk through there, it's, it's, it looks like somebody set a bomb off.
And those seniors, once that is built and they are in an elevated unit where they have a really great view of it, they might not be so eager to keep those reservations. It, it's horrible. It's really hideous. Those are something to keep in mind.
This is Commissioner Han. When, when did that clearing take place?
Oh, 2018, the summer of 2018.
Okay.
That's approximately right.
I would hope that somebody would walk that property to see it.
And I won't ever forget it, because there was a bulldozer practically in my backyard at 9:00 PM on a Friday night in the summer. My kids thought we were under attack. It was, it was pretty horrible.
Sorry about that. Again, it sounds like, you know, that would be Wilson Township or county issue.
Okay, I'm just telling you, there's going to be an issue with the immediately surrounding land. It's going to be a fire hazard for your property that you're annexing, and I believe it's going to cause issues for people actually wanting to live there. Just something to consider.
Commissioner Olson. How, it's difficult to decide, based on the map that we have, how much of that bluff side that they're talking about is in the area that is going to be supposedly annexed eventually into the city. And it's, it's difficult to know. And it's, it's difficult to know, just driving by and looking at it, where, what is in the proposed annexation area and what is not, as far as that, the bluff land area that they are talking about.
This is Carlos Espinoza speaking. So, the area that's proposed to be annexed is all non-bluff land area, for the most part. So, the area that has been clear cut, majority of that, I'd say at least over 90%, is outside of the annexation area that is being proposed for council on May 4th.
This is Commissioner Han. Do we know, why was that disturbed? Was it, were they harvesting lumber, or what was the, what was the purpose behind that?
This is Laurel Latrell. The purpose was the property owner, Mr. Booblets, was hoping to put innumerable houses on the side of the bluff, and he thought if he went ahead and clear cut it and got it out of there, it would show everybody how developable it was, and that's what he told us, anyway. Those were his words. It wasn't logged, they just, yeah, it wasn't clear cut for logging, I mean, it was just bulldozed and left in piles.
I mean, can you guys fly a drone over it to see the devastation?
I don't believe that I could do that stuff, no, no.
No, of course not, but in the...
So, maybe it should be tabled.
And again, I think this is still an issue for, what's outside of the area, the Wilson Township.
This is Commissioner Shortridge. Mr. and Ms. Latrell, did, did you ever talk to anyone at the county? I mean, there is, the county also has a bluff land ordinance that is related to both clearing as well as construction. Did anyone ever reach out to either the county regarding what was going on in your backyard or to anybody in the township? Did you ever talk to anybody in any of, either of those township or county about this issue, about the bluff land being cleared?
Um, I assume that our, the county, or the township, anyway, knew about it, because I think they were the ones who first passed on this and thought it wasn't the right, in the best interest of the property owners, the land. And, you know, we do have neighbors who also knew about it, who are on the township, so yes, they knew. I mean, we didn't put through a formal complaint, but we certainly weren't asked if we thought it was okay, like we are being now.
I'll ask, this is Commissioner Shortridge, I'll ask you one other question. Are you saying that the Wilson Township had this proposal first given to them and they rejected it for some environmental or planning reasons?
Um, I don't know that for a fact. You know, I did not go to any meetings, and so it would only be hearsay, but that was my understanding, but I don't know that.
Yes, you know, back at, Commissioner Buell here, our chairman Buell, back at our agenda item today is the comprehensive plan amendment for this piece of land from the low-density to urban residential at 22839. There's issues outside of that that should be taken up with other appropriate authorities. I guess, I'm looking for other, other people, other public that wish to speak today to this comprehensive plan amendment at 22839 County Road 17. Anyone from the public like to speak, please state your name and address. I'll make a third and final call for the public, the two, our second call, another call, for members of the public to speak to the planning commission today on a comprehensive plan amendment request from low-density to urban residential at 22839 County Road 17. If anyone would like, anyone would like to speak, please state your name and address. I'll make a third and final request from anyone, members of the public wishing to speak to the planning commission today for a comprehensive plan amendment request from urban, or excuse me, from low-density to urban residential at 22839 County Road 17. If anyone would like to speak, please state your name and address.
Mr. Heisey, are you trying to speak? We can't hear you.
Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close public hearing.
Hello? Can anybody hear me?
Oh, there we go. Yes, we can hear you.
All right, this is...
State your name and address, please.
This is Leon Bowman, and 22827 Graven Heights Road. Mr. Espinoza got a letter from me to read at your meeting. As of now, I have not heard him read anything. So, he has my statement, which I expect he will read to you, and then I will have some more comments.
This is, this is Commissioner Hall. Can you hear me? Not sure if I'm muted or not. Yes, just wanted to tell Mr. Bowman that we were emailed your letter. I don't note that it was the intent or, or anything to read it at the meeting, but we haven't delivered...
That was my intent.
But we haven't been delivered your email, along with Carlos's brief responses.
Okay, so you've got, you've got my comments.
Correct.
Okay. I, if I was there and I knew how to do this, other than the way we're doing it, I would have been there to read that, because I think the public needs to hear what my comments are. You do have, there's a whole bunch of things involved with all of this. You know, I'm listening in, you've got, you know, we're going to do this over, or whatever, we don't have any say on it. You've got areas in the city, right now, it's surrounded by city property, the examples that were brought up, you know, as to where these houses or co-ops are going in. Why are we going in, out into the township and deciding we're just going to do one? You got Bremmer, you got, you got Buck Ridge, you got 200 and some acres that just came in with the burglars. Why, why, why all of a sudden we have to go out into the township? And then you just do it by ordinance? You know, that's, that doesn't make any sense. I was on that, I was on the task force, the housing task force, and I brought these subjects up, these areas before, and I was told that no one wanted to drive that far. People didn't want them driving through their neighborhood, et cetera. Now, this has got the same situation in our township, because the neighbors aren't going to want them driving through their neighborhood. And you've got, you're putting in three acres, why not, why aren't you annexing, or you're annexing it all anyway, but why aren't you doing this zoning change with all of it? Because the plan was, what we were originally told, that there's going to be housing units going in that buffer zone that you're talking about. I mean, there's so much stuff going on here that just doesn't make any sense. The reality of it all is, I think that there's a lot of hidden agendas with all of this. I will address your brush situation, and that's what it was. We were, we were informed of it by neighbors. We'd have no control over it, because it's brush at that time, there was no logging done. When we looked at it, it was already a done deal. That was the homeowner that did that, and it should be his responsibility 100% to clean it up before anything else. I've also had phone calls from people down there wondering about the survey. Has that all been done, and have the neighbors been notified of the surveys? There's been some pushback to them on that also. If you add, request that information, it should be given to them. So, the young lady that made the suggestion to postpone this or table this until you get more information, I would support that 110%, because I think there's a lot of issues going on and a lot of things happening there that your commission isn't aware of. And with that, I will, I will just sort of back off and see if you've got any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Sure, and this is Carlos Espinoza. I have the comments that were received, and what it says is, please present the following questions and comments to your planning commission on Monday. What right does the commission have to rezone the property that is not in the city? I would note that this is related to comprehensive plan change, not rezoning. Moving on, if this can be done now, then they should also rezone all of Winona Township, as they may someday annex it also. This should be done to save the commission time and effort in the future. The proposed annexation of this property is for 9.35 acres. Why rezone only three acres and not the whole parcel? To whose advantage is it to only rezone three acres? Why is this rezoning being done on this property when the city has lots of other areas within the city that could go on that do not have to be annexed? We, Wilson Township, are close to an orderly annexation agreement with the city of Winona. Why rush to annex this property when the process will be taken care of if we can complete our joint proposed agreement? Your commission is independent of the city management and city council, and should be tasked with making common sense and realistic recommendations to the council. I am sure your members will have all looked at the property and seen how it will not be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And that was a statement that Leon submitted.
Thanks, Carlos.
Yep.
Thank you, Carlos.
Any more? Any questions of me from, from the council or the commissioners?
Appears we have no question. We still have a open, I guess, a public hearing, was Phil Heisey maybe wanting to speak, or we lost him? Go on. We have a public hearing, we've had several calls, I think we need to start counting We have a public hearing open today here for comprehensive plan amendment, low-density plan amendment request, low-density to urban residential at 22839 County Road 17. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the commission today, state your name and address, please. One more? Okay, I'll make one more final request for anyone from the public wishing to speak to the planning commission today regarding this comprehensive plan amendment request to go from low-density to urban residential at 22839 County Road 17. If anyone would like to speak, please state your name and address.
And if you're muted, press star six.
Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close public hearing and turn it over to commissioners.
This is Commissioner Han. I have a, kind of a technical question here for staff. Under the description of urban residential, one of the bullet points says, "Should be well-connected to parks, open spaces, shopping, and services." How is that qualified? Because this, what, what does well-connected mean? I mean, this is obviously a proposal that is going to be on the outskirts of Winona.
Sure, and what I will say is that the requested designation, the urban residential, as I mentioned in my summary today, that's more applicable to, I, what I would say is, which is the core area of Winona. And so, it's a little bit of a stretch to apply that to this specific location, but nonetheless, it's all that we have to work with in terms of a designation that would support that R3 zoning in the future.
Commissioner Olson, I'll make a motion to approve the changes on this property from comprehensive, the comprehensive plan amendment request, low-density to urban residential, with the inclusion of the recommended conditions that Carlos mentioned earlier, so we can move forward as far as the discussion.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Olson. Anybody else?
Yes, this is Dale Batier. I would second that motion.
Thank you, Dale. Got a motion and a second to approve.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Shortridge. I guess my, I have a little bit of the same concern, Commissioner Han, that we, one, it's, it's not really urban in, in, in terms of the planning, comprehensive plan format. I'm a little worried, again, that we're going down the slope of calling something, something it isn't, just so we can push it along and vote for it, and that makes me uncomfortable. It's not as egregious as calling something cluster housing that isn't, but it's certainly not, you know, we're, we're reaching to try to find something we can categorize it under when it really is probably a different category, and that may well be, we don't have that category, I don't know. There's no other density that would allow for multi, I mean, four stories up on a bluff, that's, it's going to be an awfully tall building there, and there's neighbors around it. I'm a little concerned that we've also got a couple of people that look like they're still online, including Mr. Heisey and some other neighbors who apparently aren't able to speak because of our format. That bothers me a little as well, and I think we should probably know more from Wilson Township, and in fact, there is also some comprehensive integrated planning or annexation underway with the city, that's probably more appropriate, but we're not really reviewing annexation. We're just talking about as, an hypothetical zoning change or comprehensive plan change, were it to become annexed. So, you know, the hypothetical worries me a little without having really maybe a full picture of how this proposal impacts the site and the neighborhood, and that's all I have, and I will mute.
Thank you, Commissioner Shortridge. Commissioner Buell here, I see this, kind of have the same question. It seems to fit into urban residential, but the, don't the use fit into the setting? We are well-connected, possibly to parks, definitely connected to open space, but shopping and services, not so much. They do have decent space there for transitions to existing neighborhoods, but again, yeah, this will be four stories, they're telling us. So, thank you. Other commissioners? Do you have a motion and a second to approve?
I, Commissioner Olson, if I read the, the site, the Kennedy location plan that we have in front of us, the building itself will not be on the bluff, it will be back... not be on the bluff, it will be back down there in the lower elevations. But, as far as the bluff land, the bluff, the clearing of that bluff land, I think that somewhere along the line, I think the property owner needs to get the proper authorization and clean up the mess that he created.
This is Carlos Espinoza, yes, I'll just comment too, that, Liver, you are reading the map correctly. The proposed development is at the bottom of the bluff area, it's not at the top, and I believe it is one underground story, parking was three stories above, but the developer could confirm on that. Overall, I just wanted to note that you are correct, it would not be on top of a bluff, it would actually be close to the bottom of a bluff, although, like I mentioned previously, I believe it will either be close to or just outside of the toe of the bluff that we have designated in our ordinance.
Question to the developer. Melissa, are you still with us? This is Commissioner, our Chairman Buolo.
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, okay, thank you. One question, you've mentioned this building will be four stories, is that one below ground, three above? Could you clarify that for us?
Sure, of course, it's underground, parking, and four above.
Okay, four above ground, one underground, four above. Thank you, Melissa. Back to commissioners, then we still have a motion to approve, with, along with the conditions attached, and a second. Other questions, thoughts, commissioners?
Commissioner Marks here, I would also agree with the fact that the size of that, four stories above in that area, you know, that it's, you know, the rest of the neighborhood, I have a little bit of concern on that, as well as the...
Commissioner Marks, could you, can you be closer to your microphone, turn up your volume, speak clearly, water, please?
There you go.
All right.
My dog's here, so I just didn't want her to be noisy in it, so. No, what I said was, I have just a little bit of concern about the four stories high in that sort of residential neighborhood, what that'll look like aesthetically for the neighbors, and also the, also as Peter, Commissioner Shortridge stated, the urban residential stretch on the designation, so, those are just my thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Marks? Other thoughts, commissioners? Well, we have a motion to approve with conditions and a second. Discussion, shall we have a vote?
Commissioner Olson, move.
Okay. Commissioner Olson, is it a aye?
Aye.
Batcher?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Buolo?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Ballard?
Aye.
Han?
Nay.
Marks?
Nay.
Shortridge?
Nay.
We have motion carries, I believe, five voting in favor and three voting against.
They call it a democracy.
Yep. Thank you. On to next agenda, anyone have other business?
So, sorry to interrupt, but this is Cindy Telstad speaking. I just wanted to address what sounded to me like may have been a concern that I might be able to assuage, which, which is, it appeared there were concerns that there may have been pub, public members who were having difficulties getting in. If you're thinking that because I remained, or my number appears to have remained on the line, I'm not one of them, I've just stayed on the line to listen, so, I just wanted to pass that on. Thanks.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, I don't believe we've lost anyone.
Correct.
Just our next agenda item would be other business. Any other, anyone have any other business, commissioners or staff?
I have, this is Commissioner Shortridge, I have a question for Carlos and Luke, and I'm sorry I didn't email this to you sooner, but I have a couple of locals up here asked me, at the corner of Garvin Heights Road and Conrad, the residential right across from where the Brenner property just was changed, as far as the zoning for housing, we have a commercial contractor's shop going up on the corner. Can you shed any light on the zoning for this structure that's now being built right at the corner of this residential neighborhood?
Sure, yeah, this is Carlos speaking. That does have residential zoning, and that is a residential house essentially with a very large garage area. So, somebody will be living on the premise, they will have an onsite office and a large garage area where vehicles will be stored.
Thank you, Carlos. Any other, other business?
Carlos, you're saying that that was built under a residential zoning and planning permit, or building permit?
Correct.
That's a house?
Correct.
Not a, not a contractor's shop with a tin roof and a pole barn?
We don't have any urban design standards for residential homes.
But, how can you say that's a home? It's not a home, it's a great, great big shop with a semi-bay, and it's a pole barn.
Despite what it appears, there is somebody living there, and that meets the definition of the dwelling. Like I said, we do not have design standards for our residential areas, so, anybody could put up a similar style building in any area of the city, as long as it meets the definition for a dwelling, which is, somebody is living there. Additionally, there will not be work being done at the property, it's essentially a garage where vehicles will be stored, it's like having a big house with a big garage on it.
Well, it's like being a little house with a big garage on it, but, okay.
Well, I understand, but I...
We're, we're again up here really stretching, I guess it may just be another example of some real weak holes in our planning and design process, but that's really kind of an atrocity in a residential neighborhood where everybody's building homes, and we've just done all this planning around development, and to have a contractor build a, I mean, this is like somebody having a shoes, you know, a shoehorned little apartment in the, in a corner of a large bay, there's semi-bay, there's a truck bay on both sides of this thing, anyway, you're saying that's, it sounds like this question has been asked of you before, and I guess you've answered it for us.
Yes.
Other comments? Other, other, other business? Just looking for...
Commissioner Olson, move for adjournment.
Commissioner Han, second the motion.
A motion and a second for adjournment, all in favor say aye, Commissioner Olson, we gotta do roll call vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Batcher?
Aye.
Buolo, aye. Hall?
Aye.
Ballard?
Aye.
Han? Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Shortridge?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, we are adjourned.